All right, good evening, everyone. We are opening up our special board meeting tonight. And we were going to call the meeting to order. And Mr. Gallo, are you, do you have your, your flag there, sir?
No, nobody told me to, nobody told me to do it.
All right. And I don't know, do you have the waving one, Dr. Volkermer?
By chance?
I think we do.
All right. Well, Dr. Hill, if you would lead us in the pledge. Everyone stand, please. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. You may be seated. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Appreciate that. We're now at item 1.3, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I think it's been moved and seconded. And now I will call for the vote. Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Masalas Medina?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. We are now at 2.1, the public comments. Are there any public comments for the budget and local control accountability plan? Karen?
No, there are none.
There are none. All right. Thank you. Then we will move to 2.2, the budget and local control accountability plan update. Dr. Volkermer, I will keep you in.
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, thank you very much for agreeing to have a special board meeting with us around the budget. When we came to you last on, on May 19th, the Governor's May Revise was literally only a couple of days old. We had not had a chance to digest it ourselves or have the advantage of many of the various agencies that do the interpretation of the Governor's May Revise. That's why we asked for the special board meeting in the first place. So today, what we're planning to bring you is our best information that we have based on the Governor's May Revise. But I'll share with you what, what a fluid situation this is. It's changing every day as the legislature reacts to the Governor's May Revise in preparation for their required responsibility of presenting a balanced budget by June 15th. So as early as this morning, there was additional information about the Senate taking a very different path than the governor had laid out in the May Revise. And basically, that, that looks like the difference between cuts immediately and deferring money so that we would not have to make as many cuts or any cuts at all perhaps, but we would have a, a cash flow challenge rather than a cut to program challenge. This is how fluid the situation is. We're trying as best we can to keep up absolutely with the latest and greatest information for you. And so what we have today does not take that into account. I want to be very clear. When we have been preparing this over the last two weeks, we were basing it on the Governor's May Revise, which was the latest information. It does not account for that possibility, and it is a possibility. We won't really know for sure until June 15th, when all is said and done with the state budget. So we want to qualify that very clearly for you, that what we're going to present today, tonight, is based on the best information we had up until needing to, to finish the PowerPoint and be prepared for our presentation this evening. It is a reflection of the Governor's May Revise and does not take into account this latest information. As Mr. Tillman said at the last board meeting, this, this has come as hard and as fast as any budget condition we've ever seen. The economic downturn is enormous. And typically, we have a lot more time to see it coming. This came very quickly, and so we've had to react very quickly. So what you're going to see are, this evening, are our best ideas in terms of some potential cuts that we would make if the Governor's May Revise stayed in place. And again, we'll qualify that as such. We know we want to have a process where we involve our community in relation to any cuts, should they come. Well, you'll see that because that was a request at the last board meeting as well in terms of involving the board very directly in the leadership of the process and making sure that we were having public hearings and opportunities for our community to weigh in on the fact. So again, absent what has occurred today, this was the information that we had. We're going to share it with you with that qualification, that very clear qualification. Before I turn it over to Janie, I just want to say thank you to her and her team, Janet King in particular, as one of her team members for the, the huge amount of work that they've invested in preparing this. It's been literally, we're getting a new piece of information every day about a particular categorical, about a particular, you know, funding source that's going to change or the possibility of new relief types of funds. And so I want to commend them absolutely for keeping up with something that's changing very, very dynamic politically and as a result financially for us. So Janie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkermer. Good evening, board. So as Dr. Volkermer commented, this doesn't take into account the Senate's version of the Governor's budget. We still have a couple weeks of deliberations, and so we will continue to respond to the information until the budget is adopted. We do still have reductions we need to make because we do have a structural imbalance in our budget. So we'll go ahead and jump in. Next slide, please. So, board, there was a number of items that you requested information on, and so this is our attempt to provide that information to you. A list of current vacancies, items funded, I think Mr. Tillman asked about the items that have been funded with one-time dollars, but they've been treated as ongoing. Our supplemental and concentration, so as you know, when LCFF is reduced, then our supplemental and concentration is reduced as well. Some, just a review of budget reductions to all departments and sites to offset some of these cuts coming from the state as a result of COVID. Savings related to the early school closure that will help offset those cuts, one-time offset. Estimated actuals are what we think our carryover will be, which we'll have for you, I believe, in two weeks. I think it was Dr. Flores that asked about a SERP. It's too late for the current years. We don't specifically have a slide on this, but wanted to respond to your request. Some of the budget reductions that we've come up with as a team and where there's still a need to reduce, or it could be backfilled with some federal dollars. We just don't know at this time. And then some budget subcommittee work that Dr. Perez will cover. I see we have a question.
Yes, on the, yes, on the item that says, the, item two, the, what I was requesting were the one-time expenditures that we're paying for with ongoing dollars.
Oh, yeah. So I think they were considered one time when they were adopted but have continued. So maybe I have the wording incorrect. Mr. Tillman, unless it's a, a different list and we can.
I'll give you, I'll give you a perfect example.
Okay.
Chromebooks are a one-time expenditure. But we've always been using ongoing money to fund the Chromebooks.
Yes, and it's on the list.
Presentation down in there?
Yes, it is. It's on the list.
But if you were going to give what I wanted, it would have said, items funded, one-time expenditures are funded with ongoing dollars.
Okay, so I didn't word it properly. Thank you.
The other one is the TSSP. TSSP to me is a, is a, a one-time expenditure every year. But we use ongoing money to do it because my thought is always, has always been, if we get to a, a budget crunch, we could use that money to help us.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. I think I just ordered it different. Thank you.
Okay, and I think is Dr. Flores, is it on the same slide?
Yes, it's on, on the SERP. And Janie, correct me, but all we would need to do is get, I don't remember the name of it, but ask the teachers' union for an addendum or some, I don't know what it's called. I forgot what it's called. For us to initiate early retirement. Um, I believe that we can do that.
The district can offer an early retirement. It's, this, this school year is almost over, is just the point.
No, no, no. After the school year is over, there is a specific, there is a specific, um, I don't remember the name of it. Uh, there is a, uh, some kind of amendment with the, with SBTA that, uh, it's all that we need to do to instantiate, uh, a SERP after the date. Could you find out, could you find out what that is, Harold?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Can I move on?
Yes, there's no more questions. Thank you.
Next slide, please, David. So, um, we were pretty close last, um, a week and a half ago when we came to you, and we have about a, a little over a $55 million budget cut that's required. Um, we did get more clarification on which categoricals, and we'll spend a little time on that, but it's about 3.4 million in categoricals that added to that number. Um, again, we, um, this number comes after we, um, look at some of the reliefs that the governor has proposed related to Persson-Sturs and the CARES Act, and we'll go into detail a little bit later. Next slide. So, um, the legislature is currently responding to the Governor's May Revision. They have till June 15th to provide a budget to the governor. What we're doing for now is we have to get our budget done, is we've incorporated the 10% deficit. Um, we've been notified that our lottery funding for both the current year and next year will be reduced by about 1.1 million. A categorical reduction. Um, and you'll see the breakdown of the, the, the categorical reduction between CAPS, Adult Ed, and some of our smaller categoricals that equate to $3.4 million. And then, um, we are also hearing that the governor has emergency education relief called GEAR. 11 million for special education. We'll talk a little more about it later. It's for distance learning and physically distant schooling and helping with our special needs students. As well as the Coronavirus Relief Fund that's proposed to help, um, districts that have a high concentration of, um, unduplicated students. And so that also will be spent in providing support around any summer school or the costs related to physically distant, um, schooling. Next slide. So I'm gonna walk you through this slide. I believe it was Dr. Flores that requested the list of, um, vacancies. And so what we tried to capture here, as you can imagine, in a district with almost 8,000 employees, there's a lot of ins and outs and a lot of things occurring all the time. But in our certificated non-management, we had 81 resignations and retirements. Of those 81, 56 were, um, were retirements for teaching positions or resignations specific for teaching positions. 25 are counselors, psychologists, and special ed, um, education teachers. And so those we replace. They have, um, caseloads and other things, so we're replacing those. And that gets us to the 81, um, FTE that you see at the top in the note. So of the 56, we have 35 that are part of our allocation to our staffing ratios based on our projected enrollment. And what HR is doing is they're taking, looking at each, uh, required credential and seeing what we can do so that we can fill it within the district. There are a number of them that are, um, very, um, hard-to-hire positions. And so that's just something that HR is working through so that we can, um, identify the savings. Ms. King has already incorporated a, a reduction of 35 FTE in our multi-year projection in response to our projected 860 fewer students. And then what's a potential savings is the 21 FTE that's left at the bottom of the chart. And so that's where you will see another 2 million reflected, but we have to get to that 35 mil, uh, 35 FTE before we can account for that. And that is sta, stay, sticking really, um, adhering to our staffing ratio. As far as our classified non-management positions, again, there's a number of positions, some within the general fund, some in our nutrition services and other funds. And, um, HR is looking at the ones that need to be filled. And then we're considering which ones can we freeze until school reopens. And as you know, we have employees that work from, you know, three hours to eight hours. Some have benefits, some do not. And so we are, um, thinking about, at this point, about 250,000 a month in savings, and that's been incorporated in our s, early school closure as well as some other reductions that we're looking at. And so this was a chart in response to the vacancy, um, inquiry. Next slide. Uh, Mr. Tillman, um, these were some of the LCAP at the time that were considered one-time expenditures paid with ongoing dollars. Of course, now the state has, um, is proposing to deficit our spending and take us back a few years of, of, um, LCFF. But the Chromebooks, so we have the Chromebook dollars, and we've made a lot of um, headway in providing internet and, um, computers for our students. About 2.5 million of it is obligated to Wi-Fi. We have our Generation Go funding for student interns. The board allocated extra dollars above the CAPS funding to, um, reduce the waiting list. Most, uh, most of that is obligated to contracted services. We have career pathways that was allocated in September this year. Professional development, um, TSSP of which 4.1 million is ongoing. Some field trip money, teacher supply money. And then some LCAP programs that have been funded through, um, carryover each year. And we'll talk a little bit about that later in the presentation.
And Ms. Christakis, uh, Mr. Tillman has a question, I believe, on somewhere in the area of what you've covered so far?
Yes, I, I do. Uh, one on the Chromebooks. I, I just want to make sure that, uh, not only with the Chromebooks, but with the devices that we took out of the schools, that we're gonna make sure that we're gonna purchase those mu, those devices because we can use the money that came out of the CARES Act, correct?
Yes, so we're gonna use the CARES Act. We're proposing, um, to use that for the deficit, but in the new dollars that I just talked about at the beginning, that's specifically for distance learning and physically, um, distancing schools. We're, we believe we're gonna be able to use that to, um, replace those devices at, and we believe that cost is around $15 million.
And, and have we started ordering the devices to replace in the schools?
Um, I do not believe so, but Ms., uh, Dr. Mitchell can respond that many schools were using federal dollars at the end of the year to purchase devices.
So, so, uh, Mr. Tillman, what's happening is that we asked our IMT staff, uh, led, uh, led by, um, Eric Fertier to, um, take a, um, an assessment of exactly what, what devices left each school, also in terms of those costs. So that's one list we have, so we already have that list. Right now, what we're doing is analyzing what schools ordered, um, prior to shutdown. So most schools order devices um, as we start to close our budgets toward the end of the year, prepping for the next year. So there's several million dollars that were approved from schools right before we shut down and also right past shutting down, um, that were devices. And so we want to see how that impacts schools. And then we also want to have some time, um, to spend with our principals to have them, tell us, to have them analyze based on what they still have left on their campuses, based on what they, um, have ordered in the spring, already ordered, uh, what their needs might be. So we need, we need a little bit more time to develop a good sense of how much, um, how, how many devices to order per school.
And, and I guess my concern is this, uh, and it goes to you, Ms. Christakis, because it's, it's a, it's a finance issue. Uh, from the perspect, I, I gave you a good example. Today, I got an email from one of my employees that said that, uh, they wanted a new laptop, but they didn't want to ask their supervisor for the laptop. Uh, because in the past, uh, she's balked at giving them new, uh, laptops. Now, this person was disgruntled, so they went directly to me. But what he, what he didn't know is, I'm buying as many computers as I can right now because the county has received funding just for devices that allowed us to telecommute because we can deem those as money associated with COVID-19. So they don't know that, but I know that. And the, my, the, to the, to the same point is with the district. The district has received money that can only be spent on devices that were used for COVID-19. If, if you have principals thinking that they have to spend their money for devices, it changes the game. And you put me in a bad predicament because the principals are doing what they want, what they're, what they're doing, uh, with, based on their fid, uh, fiduciary responsibility, not realizing that there's, for lack of a better term, free money out there to buy devices. So as long as that communication is going that, hey, we have money for you to buy these devices, and it qualifies for this, it qualifies for this restricted money that came out of the CARES Act, I'm fine with it. But it would be, uh, it would be,
We have, we have done that, Mr. Tillman. So we, we, we have told principals that we would make them whole with district dollars.
So, so,
And, uh, what, what, what I'm suggesting to you is that schools did a bunch of orders before COVID hit. And those devices, um, what we want to make sure that, uh, principals consider what they've already ordered while we assess what we need to, to order for them to supplement to make sure that they're whole. So we, we have communicated clearly to principals that the, uh, devices that went out of their schools, not only to just their own kids, but to other, to support other schools that did not have the amount of devices that, uh, particular schools had, that we would make those schools whole. So we are analyzing that, and we have not pulled the trigger to order yet because we're still gathering that data.
I just, I, I was kind of confused about the part about they had ordered devices uh, before they left school. The, the ones I am concerned about, and you did mention, to be fair, are the ones that we took out of the schools in order to ha, make sure students were able to do distant learning, because that was unplanned. So as long as all those devices get ordered and we place them back in those schools to make the school sites whole, that's what my concern is. Because it's too easy to do, because the, the restricted money from COVID-19 CARES Act will allow us to pay for it. And then the other thing, um, uh, Ms. Christakis, you, you mentioned that the state was proposing to make cuts. I think at, in this time, we need to say the governor proposed to make the cuts. Because, because the Senate is part of the state, and the Senate has clearly proposed to reject the cuts in terms of K-12 local control funding formula. And they also proposed it to reject the cuts for K-12 categorical, uh, programs. So, uh, we shouldn't say this is what the state proposed, as far as I'm concerned. This is what the governor proposed. The Senate, thankfully, is proposing something totally different.
Yes, Mr. Tillman, and that's dependent on the federal government, um, providing more funding. So we, we know the impact to the state has been great, and so, um, thank you.
And, and, and if you could add one thing, if you have to do it now, but because I, I can, I, I hear the concern in your voice, but I'd like to know at the end of the presentation or where we want to put it in, what would happen if, uh, the worst case scenario happened with the Senate's plan and we had to, um, use the referrals? Uh, the, what would the material impact to us be? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Um, anything else on this slide? Can I move on?
No, there are no other questions.
Oh, I have a question, Madam President.
Oh, okay, I didn't see anything in the, oh, yeah, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, Janie, uh, I, I'm a, I'm following up with Danny's concern, uh, in terms of the, uh, devices. It's not just Chromebooks, but the devices at each school that, that they had to replace.
Right.
And also, um, you know, some of them, uh, I know, uh, we're not in working condition. So a lot of, uh, devices need to be replaced, uh, that were not, uh, operational. And, you know, I don't know how you can do it. I hope, you know, I don't know if we can have a running, um, open, running, um, uh, PO, uh, because if we wait to get all the information from every single school, it, that's gonna take a long time. So I don't know if, uh, if our companies, our vendors are willing to have open POs as we get the, as we get the, the data. I don't know how that works. Uh, can you explain that to, to me?
So the IMT, actually IT, I don't have it in front of me. We can get you a BC, but they've been responding to the broken devices. And so between, um, oh, cyber tech and, and IT, they have, um, they've been doing all of that and, and replacing the devices. So I'll pro, we'll provide you with all of that information.
And like Mr. Tillman said, and like Mr. Tillman said, uh, you know, we have 24 million. I know it's not, a, and I think, uh, you said that 15 million, I don't know if Dr. Mitchell said that, but 15 million of it is, is being allocated to replace and or to, uh, you know, buy the additional devices that, uh, we've given out. Um, and I, and I guess I assume the other, um, 9 million is going to be for hotspots and whatever else we need tech support. Is that correct?
Um, well, I'll show you on a, on a future slide. We're using the CARES Act to backfill the budget need, and then the new funding, the COVID funding that you see, that I talked about on the first slide to help with the distance learning, physically distant schooling, and the device.
Right. And two more comments. For the TSSP, I mean, that was additional one-time money from, from our budget. So I,
We built it in ongoing.
Glad that you put that where we could, ongoing, but we could, we could cut it. We could cut it. And also the PD, uh, I'm glad that you put that in. I, I don't think we should cut our career pathways. We were just given, we just, we were just given two goal certification, uh, from, um, Link Learning Alliance. We have three. I think we're, we're, a, a Royal Valley School has the most in the whole state. And so I, I think we're gonna have to relook at where we're gonna go. And I also want to reiterate what uh, uh, Mr. Tillman said in terms of, uh, of, uh, you know, it is the governor who's proposing the draconian cuts. And I believe that the Senate and then the, uh, Assembly are, are not going to go along with his propose, propose cuts. So I just want the public to know that, and like you said, uh, Dr. Volkermer, this was our best, uh, uh, scenario, given the information that we had, uh, as of May 15th, but uh, new, new, uh, information is coming in by the minute, I think. And so we, uh, you know, we have to be cognizant that it looks like it's draconian right now, which it is, but it may, it's gonna shift. And, uh, so we just have to, you know, keep in mind that it's gonna shift. And I, and I thank you, Janie, and your team, and also Cabinet for looking at all the ways that we can save and also, you know, looking at, you know, the budget. I personally do want, do not, I repeat, do not want to lay off anybody. So, um, thank you, Madam President.
Absolutely, and I echo that. We don't want to lay off anyone, and we want to make sure that we're being just as fiscal as we can be. So this is great. Um, Dr. Mitchell, before I move to, um, Mr. Gallo, I thought in the middle of the conversation, you had something that you wanted to say. I didn't see. If you did.
Uh, uh, I, I did, but I'll forego. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gallo? I see you there.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, uh, bring up the fact that, um, you know, while I think the federal government will come in with some funding, they're certainly not gonna, uh, come in and cure California's, uh, structural budget deficit of 54 billion, or the last time I heard. And, um, uh, so the, you know, the expectation that there'll be some cuts here, I'm sure is gonna be a reality, uh, uh, sometime soon. We don't know what it's gonna be, but, um, I really like the work that you've done here, Janie, in preparation for this, um, and, uh, and going forward. And I think this gives us a good, uh, basis for which to, uh, move forward. And, you know, clearly we want to take care of our people and, and see everyone gainfully employed, uh, um, and, uh, but these are, these are, this is a great presentation to, uh, characterize where we think we can, um, uh, save some dollars and, uh, um, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure where we still have that reality check, that the federal government is most likely not gonna bail out the state.
Thanks, Mr. Gallo. And I, I wanted to note that this, um, slide is not a slide of cuts. It was a response to a question about, in the past, what is the board? Yeah, uh, you know, have, uh, allocated fu- ongoing funds for, and we continue to do it. So this could be part of further, uh, discussions down the road.
And Ms. Christakis, I believe Ms. Rosales Medina also has a comment, and I-
And it's just a simple comment. I just want to say I appreciate, I know it must have taken a lot of work to look at every single aspect of, of the ba- budget and, um, just providing this, this LCAP one-time allocations just helps us also look at other areas that we can definitely, um, cut. So I just wanted to say I appreciate it because I know it's not, not easy.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. It was the whole Cabinet just poring over everything and of course, all of our support staff. So are we ready for the next slide?
Yes, I think everything is answered so far. Thank you.
You're welcome. So as, as noted earlier, you know, when they cut the base, then it hits our supplemental and concentration funds. And Dr. Mitchell and Terry Komnick have been working really, really hard on this. They're going to involve all of our stakeholders, but they've also looked at how can we preserve some of the programs through this reduction? They've looked at what can be picked up with federal dollars. So a lot of work behind the scenes have been going on in preparation for our stakeholder meetings. And so we just wanted you to be aware of that as well. Um, next slide. Um, there was a question, again, these are just, um, responses to many questions. I think, uh, Dr. Flores asked this question. So how much have we saved from closing early? And here's our best estimates at this time. Um, you know, just a little over $10 million, which is a lot of money. And that is going to be used to offset the, the cuts, the projected cuts. Um, next slide. Now this slide is just, it is ugly. And what we tried to do, because it was so confusing between what the governor proposed as relief, ins and outs of everything, is just show all the negative impacts first, and then on the next slide, some proposed solutions. So at second interim, we projected a $15 million deficit. And that's related to, you know, LCFF was fully funded in 1819, and now we're taking a big step backwards. And then when you only get COLA, it doesn't cover the costs of maintaining the salary schedule and all the things that go up in, in cost. And so you all know that. We had allocated some one-time dollars year over year to LCAP, um, that we're going to have to reduce because we can't budget for this carryover. We just don't have, um, the flexibility in our budget. There's some, um, special ed services that we hadn't anticipated at second interim. That's increasing as well as our liability insurance is, uh, going up more than we anticipated. The reduction to LCFF, um, that proposed reduction from the governor. And then although the governor did preserve some funding and some equalization for special ed, he proposes reducing that one-time preschool funding. Um, and the AB 602 equalization was actually lower than we thought at second interim. And so that's why you see this, um, amount here. Various cuts, which you saw earlier for our categoricals, and then our lottery is being proposed to be reduced as well. And, and, and I think it's probably a sure thing because it's based on sales in the state, right? And, uh, sales, um, inc- excuse me, a revenue generated from sales and the sales are down. So that's the big ugly number right there, the negative impacts. But we have another slide that provides a lot of solutions around that.
And before you move on to that slide, thank you, Ms. Christakis. Mr. Tillman, you have a question?
Yes, I do. I, I, I looked through the presentation and Jenny, I know we said we had a big, uh, textbook adoption this year, but normally in all the budgets, you see like even a smaller do- adoption for $3 million here or there. There, there are no, no, there's no adoption, even a small one for next year?
Yeah, there's a small one. Um, Dr. Mitchell, I, I believe, I, I mean, he doesn't have to speak, but I believe it was about 4 million that's in the budget.
And why isn't that on the, the list to?
We're not recommending that we cut our, our adoption for next year. The next, the next go-around would be seven years from now. And so, um, we want to make sure that our kids have the latest and greatest materials that their peers are getting across the state. So we did do our big adoption this past year on science. And that, and we had to do that because the science, or the, the, the new, uh, the new standards in science, and our kids need the best, uh, book resources, as well as online materials related to those.
But in the past, we didn't, we wouldn't wait the whole seven years. You'd wait until the, the financial situation got a little bit better. But I definitely think, I mean, I don't even know what the, what adoptions are for, what, what subject.
It's VAPA.
Yeah. So I definitely think it should be on the table, you know?
Yes, and, and it is.
Nowhere in this presentation, it should be in red somewhere, that it's a possibility that we could use that, or really black, we could use that as a way to save money, or at least weigh it against other things. I mean, the board needs to have-
It, it's on the table, Mr. Tillman. I don't, I know it's not reflected in the, in the, uh, presentation. We just spoke about it today, and so I'm gathering some data on it. And so we'll, we will, we do have a plan in Cabinet to put that on the table and weigh whether or not we'll make that recommendation to the board.
Okay, I think there, there are no other questions.
Okay, next slide, which is a lot nicer than that, that slide. So you bring the, that grand total over and then we start, you know, looking at what are some of our solutions? So we're getting 25.9 is our estimate and CARES, about a million and a half has to go to private schools. It's distributed through the Title I calculation. Um, so we would like to apply the 24 million here, um, towards the budget reduction. Um, some one-time funding, you saw the chart that showed, or excuse me, one-time savings of 10 and a half million. And then line four and five is the federal dollars that we're going to see. You see in line four, um, let's see. Oh, I'm sorry.
Five and six.
I'm sorry. Yes, line four, there was, uh, questions about estimated carryover. It's all addressed, um, in part of our, uh, budget for the deficit spending. The 10 and a half million on line three goes towards, we believe that our ending balance will go up by this amount, and we're using it to offset, uh, reductions. Line five is the governor's emergency education relief gear, academic, academic support for distance learning and physically distant schooling. This is funding specifically for special education and it's one-time. Um, so we don't have it yet. Uh, Dr. Menares is working on the plan. Some of it may go to offset some of the needs we have here, and she will let us know. The coronavirus relief fund, academic support for distance learning, physically distance is estimated. Now, this is for districts with a high unduplicated count at 20 to 30 million. And so that 15 million or so for device replacement is our proposal comes out of this, uh, relief fund. The governor, uh, proposed relief and lower, actually lower rates for person stirs for the upcoming year, with years, we know we'll have to pay that in the long run. That kicks the can down the road. Our restricted maintenance contribution goes down through the, his proposal. Um, it does impact what we can do in our restricted maintenance, but it provides some relief in our unrestricted general fund. So, um, reduction in department and site budgets, so this is about 12.8 million dollars. We've worked many, many days on this. And so it includes some of the vacancy numbers that you saw above. So when each department looked at their budgets and they said, hey, I have a vacancy, I'll just freeze it, part of that, that is included in these numbers. Um, the retire and not feeling really strictly adhering to our staffing ratios, we spent a little time on that slide earlier, could result in about 2 million more in HR. And business are going to work very, very closely so that we can realize that savings. Again, um, depending on when we come back and how long we'll freeze classified positions and other, um, you know, extra duty and subs and such, we'll have a better idea with, of the freezing position savings. Again, we've already, uh, projected what we've saved for this year. We've reduced the LCAP, uh, down to its projected funding level. Um, and again, Dr. Mitchell spent a lot of time with his team and trying to preserve programs that he, um, that will be shared with stakeholders. And here's, um, you know, special ed, uh, excuse me, transportation. Um, you know, the funding is part of our base funding, and it was based on some archaic amount in the seventies is actually getting reduced as part of this whole reduction to LCFF. So we do have, we, we're talking about being more equitable with our services. Kids that go to magnet programs get, um, corner stops and closer stops to their house than kids that are on the capping system that go to their homeschool. If they're all at going to their homeschool, it's wa- it's much more efficient and we can provide a reduction in transportation, um, there. And then we always have a budget for our allotment because of the varying changes and enrollment shifts among school sites. You know, we look to try and keep combos down and that sort of thing. We are taking that budget from 30 FTE down to 10, again, trying to stick very strictly to our staffing ratios. So that provides at least 73 million dollars to offset the 96, leaving a balance of 22 million, which we hope part will come from lines five and six.
Okay, um, I, there is a question from Mr. Tillman, followed by Dr. Flores.
Uh, on, yes, Ms. Christakis, on, on line four. So the reason why the number is zero, but you're saying that, uh, all estimated carryover, 15 million dollars is allocated. The reason why you didn't put the 15 million dollars in the column is why?
Because we already, in our second interim, had incorporated that in our multi-year projection to address next year's deficit on top of the 15 million. But the 10.5 on line three will add to the ending balance this year is our projection. We're not going to know till September, so that it helps reduce, um, the reductions.
So my question is, this is based on a project?
Yes.
My point is, this is based on a projected ending balance. What is that number?
15 million. Above our required reserves, Mr. Tillman. So 15 million for required and 15 million above. So we started the year with, uh, 56, 55 million, of which 15 million is required.
Well, let me be real-
We projected that, okay.
Let me be real transparent where I'm going with this. I want a number you can give me that this is all based on, so that when the real number comes out, I can say, okay, I got some money to restore some stuff. So if you, so if you tell me that the projected ending balance is 35 million dollars, and it's, it's September, October, it comes back at 60 million dollars, and 5 million of that is general fund money, then we should be able to restore some stuff that we cut because we got more money than we expected, right?
That's true, Mr. Tillman, or it can go towards the next year as we're in for a few rough years. So at the board meeting, June 9th, we're bringing our multi-year projection. We wanted to show you this so that, uh, Ms. King can build it into the multi-year projection, which will have the estimated carryover for you in that presentation.
So, so what is the number that we're using on this presentation?
Well, we're going to take all of the, this data and build it into the budget. These are our proposals so that we have, have a balanced budget and we have to get it to the county.
Well, to be fair to me, to be, to be fair to you, eh, eh, in the, maybe in the next few days, you can tell me what number you guys are using as the projected ending balance that all these numbers are factoring into. You, somebody-
It's 15 million, Danny. It's 15 million and it's 15 point something. It's 15 million. That's what we have today.
So you're saying that the projected ending balance, is that for restricted and general fund?
No, just unrestricted. So there'd be 15 million for reserves and 15 million for deficit spending the next year.
So the ending balance can be 30 million dollars?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, uh, do you have any balance that you're projecting for restricted?
Um, that's why I want to give it to you at the next, uh, board meeting on the 9th. But our restricted ending balance projected right now is about 14 million. Most of it is, uh, some RDA funding, which goes to our COP payments. Our routine repair maintenance is about 3.9 million, and then several smaller pots of money that we're projecting at this time.
So right now you guys are projecting a, a 44 million dollar ending balance?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me. That doesn't count the federal dollars because that's deferred, but yeah, about that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Dr. Flores?
Uh, Janie, I wanted to ask you also on the projected carryover, this is just a projection, it's an estimate. You really don't know. When will we know?
In September, in September, when the books are closed. Yeah.
It'll take that long to, to, uh, have that, but-
Close the books. Yeah, we'll get closer.
You also know that a lot of the POs were not, were not, um, uh, closed or were not processed because we went into COVID.
Yes, so Ms. King and Ms. Love spent a lot of time looking at the POs and what, um, and now it's, some folks ordered stuff. It has to arrive by June 30th before we can count it this year. If it doesn't, they get rejected and it goes into the next year or it goes back to the vendor. So still a lot will happen over the next month. So they do their best based on historical data and the POs that are out there and where the vendor's located. And as you know, even some deliveries have been impacted. Um, and so it's a projection, as you stated.
And also our sites, we have 74 sites. They did not use all of their money. Uh, so have you, um, have you, uh, counted all of that?
Yeah, we look at all of it to determine the projected ending balance. And we'll have the exact, uh, projection when we bring the multi-year to you in, um, a week and a half.
Okay, so that you're working on. And I had also asked, what is the total budget in facilities? And what we have for, uh, renovation and mo- uh, modification? What's our total budget there?
Let me pull it up.
Um, because I recall, Danny, don't you recall that we borrowed, uh, 40 million from facilities, uh, to offset, uh, certain things, and then we put it back once we got it? Uh, I recall that we did that.
Yeah, we, we will have to borrow it. So as Mr. Tillman spoke of earlier, if the deferrals, if we get the deferrals, which are preferred to cuts, we will have massive borrowing.
Right. So I would like to know what the fund is. What's the balance on that fund?
So right now there's 83 million, but as you know, projects continue and the funds, you know, go down. So right now, all of the facility funds are about 83 million.
But right now, are they still working, given COVID?
We have projects. We have some projects going. Um, I can pull up the BC that showed how we determine which projects would move forward, where they are still doing physically distancing and some of our critical projects. Yes.
Well, if we need that money, we'll have to stop it.
Um, we can't-
Have to stop initiation and-
We can, we'll, we'll also have contracts that we have to abide by with our contractors, so.
I know. We, we have certain contracts. I know. But how many have we already, uh, approved? I'd like to know. I mean, you have to tell me right now, but what would, what would we have left over? Uh, and, uh, I don't think, I don't know what the exact number that we've approved, what the total is, but I would like to know what the total is, because if we need to borrow money, it's borrow money from our own for, as deferral, I would prefer that we do it from our funds and not borrow it. And not borrow it from another entity.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
But, but just to be, but just to be clear on Dr. Flores, and, and Jenny, you can correct me, but they'll be doing a TRAM, a tax revenue anticipation, though, that allows us to borrow money from the TRAM, won't they?
Yeah, so we'll do internal, so if the deferrals are as the governor proposes, we can do it internally.
That's what I meant, Danny.
Internally, all the TRAMs. If they're done as the Senate's proposing, that's, we would have to do a TRAM.
Exactly.
It's just too big.
That's why I'm saying we should borrow from ourselves.
And before you move on, I'm, I'm not sure what's next. Um, is there any other board member comments? Um, just want to make sure. I don't see any on the chat, but I just want to be sure. Okay. All right, let's move, keep it moving.
Okay, next slide. I'm, um, very pleased to turn this over to Dr. Perez.
Good evening, board. Um, this is just a, um, summary overview of our budget sub- Good evening, board. Um this is just a um summary overview of our budget subcommittee work to come. As we plan for uh future, potential future cuts, we wanted to um just share with you some of the things that we're, we will, the way that we will be engaging our stakeholders. Um looking at this from uh reducing a deficit spending approach and how might we um identify and deploy actions that will help street, both streamline our systems and help us just operate a little more efficiently. And so this is just an overview of the committees and the timelines at this point. We'll have an enrollment management group that has actually been working um for many months already, and we expect their work to wrap up in September. And then an operational efficiencies team that will work July through October and a budget allocation team that will work July through November. Um we did share at the last board meeting that we anticipated our subcommittees to wrap up in November so that uh Janie and team um have uh the information they need to um share with you. You know, the information that we need to to uh mid-year um budget info. And so just wanted to share um and let you know, we will be engaging stakeholders. When you look at these teams, we will see a variety of folks reflected here from parents to students, our community um organizations, our teachers, admin, um our classified folks and everybody in between, just so that we um are getting input from everyone as we move forward. So just um wanted to share that information with you. Thank you.
All right.
And then I think there's, I think.
Yeah, I see. Let's see. Is it um? Okay, Mr. Tillman, Dr. Volkmer said he'll wait. Mr. Tillman and then followed by Dr. Flores. Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, so um thanks for the presentation, and I know it did require a whole lot of work. I really do appreciate it. Um, you know, things are always changing. But something that's clear to me now is that the government and and I'm and I'm happy just, I mean, I'm right now, I am very, very happy. Because it's obvious that the governors may revise was the worst case scenario. Uh it's obvious that the sentence is the best case scenario. The assembly is going to weigh in. It will be in there somewhere in the middle. But to Mr. Christakis, I think it's critical that uh you tell us what it would take to function. Uh if if the if the Senate proposal passes and they say they're going to wait to see if the fans give us the five billion, and if not, we'll be able to operate with deferrals. And the reason why I asked the question, because I don't know if that would impact the 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 scheduling of the the school year, uh in terms of being able to fund it or uh or any other caveat that we might want to change in order to accommodate um the scenario. If the Senate's version passes and they don't make the cuts that the governor is talking about, but we have to rely on uh the deferments, what would be the worst thing about that?
So thanks, Mr. Tillman. So we'll have information for you based on, you know, it was today that we got the huge amount of deferrals and we'll use the schedule that's in Ed Code when we would receive the dollars. For now, we have to be prepared for the worst. We have to prepare our budget to be balanced or at least covered through carryover. And so what I would say, Mr. Tillman, is if the relief comes, then we look at some of the things that we reduced and we decide in a priority order what we would add back. But being prepared for both scenarios is imperative. And at our next presentation, we will have that for you. And by the fifteenth, we should, you know, the legislature has to turn um the budget into the governor, and we should hear something shortly thereafter. As you know, we have a statutory requirement to have our budget adopted by June thirty. And we will have to make some assumptions. We'll have to move on that. And because we do have to wrap up the budget and submit it, there's always budget revisions. We have the ability to make changes as the information unfolds, and we'll know a lot more in August as well. We just never want to be in a position that we can't meet our obligations.
Oh, and I agree. I agree one hundred percent. It's just, it's, it was just refreshing to see the uh the proposal by the Senate. And I just want to assure everybody, it's going to be a whole lot better. Um, uh, Dr. Volkmer quoted Kevin Gordon. Kevin Gordon has been involved in the state's finances for as long as I've been on the school board. And he's always had a good feel for the direction things were going to go. So I can guarantee you that um they're going to be that the 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 final budget from the state is going to be more like the Senate's version than it will be the governor's. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I think we have one more slide if you, if we're ready to move on.
Madam President, I I have a question for Janie.
Yes, I was just about to call you, but go ahead.
Mm-hmm. Could you put it back, Janie? Or not for, well, for Janie and for uh Lorraine, Lorraine.
Right, okay.
Uh, I want to thank you for uh having those committees. It's real important uh in terms of that. And just a reminder, we do have a um budget subcommittee, a board subcommittee, uh Dr. Volkmer. And but I know time's short and uh I and I just want uh, I hope that we put all the budget, public budget meetings uh online so that our our uh parents and um, you know, our community can join in uh on this. I know this is a special board meeting, but I I guess you're going to call special board meetings for the budget, correct? Uh, Dr. Volkmer?
You'll you'll see that on the next slide, Doc.
Right. Okay, so that'll be in the next slide. Okay, it's real important. And uh I just want to reiterate what Danny said. Uh Kevin Gordon's uh intel is really, really key. And uh and yes, we're waiting for the federal government to provide us with some support. And of course, that, we won't know that until maybe the next month or so, hopefully sooner. Uh but uh I think that I don't know if we'll get all of it. I think we'll get some. And to mitigate, uh I I appreciate the different places that you have um, you know, projected and and maybe the board decides to follow that, maybe not, but at least gives us a little wiggle worm. And uh anyway, um thank you so much for the work that you've done. But I don't think it's, this is the worst case scenario. And uh and I don't think it'll, we'll we'll end up doing that. So thank you.
All right. Um we, no other comments on these so far?
Okay, next slide. So um board, with the economic impact, yeah, I am so hopeful that we'll get some federal dollars. But it's going to take some time to recover because we, you know, it's just depends on the trajectory of the virus and what's going to happen. There's just a lot of unknowns that we have to be prepared for. And so we want to get this budget done the best we can with the information we have as transparent as possible, involving as many folks as as possible. But of course, with such a short nature of this notice from the governor and our requirement to budget accordingly, um we had to make some tough decisions. And um then the budget committee work that Dr. Perez talked about, we can always change things. We can reprioritize. There's work we can do over the next several months. But in um on June tenth, we're going to have another board meeting. Uh oh, that's the L cap budget meeting. And then June sixteen is another board workshop. We will need to wrap up our budget by the twenty-third, our public hearing budget, in order for it to be adopted by the thirtieth. It takes Janet at least ten days or so to balance everything. You know, once you change one number, the reserve changes, our restricted maintenance changes. And so we're going to use the information we provided to you this evening to build in the budget and continue to listen to um you, the board, and our stakeholders as we move forward. But I just wanted you to be aware that we have to start wrapping things up, you know, on the sixteenth. And well, if we hear anything specifically the twenty-third, we can make minor tweaks before the budget adoption on the thirtieth. Again, when the August uh budget is deliberated again, we'll be ready to make more changes. And that's it for this evening.
Right. Thank you um to, first, let me see. I don't see any other board comments. Are there any other board comments? Board members? Uh, Dr. Hill? You might be on mute.
I am. Thank you, Madam President. Uh I have four questions. Uh I I hope you can respond to. But I want to first say thank you to Danny, uh Cabinet and the team for giving us this this presentation and one that we can look at and um and just see how much work you put into it. So just want to say thank you so much. But I do have four questions. And my first one is, with the magnet programs that we have operating now, are they operating in a negative or a positive uh 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 fashion? And if it's negative, can we relocate some of those programs? Especially if we can result a savings?
I can take that or or Lorraine. No.
Dr. Mitchell?
So I'll, in terms of, are we operating in a negative? No, don't think of it more like we're we're probably not operating as efficient as we can. We've uh we've allowed over the years um a lot of parental choice as it relates to moving kids around the uh around the school. And it really, the magnets really hearken to a a a earlier day where where we built programs at particular schools and then we bus schools, we bus kids to those programs. In this day and age, our schools are are pretty much offering all the same kinds of opportunities. So we see an opportunity to um keep kids at their homeschool as much as possible. We also see an opportunity, uh 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 Dr. Hill, to your point, that Lorraine will lead in the budget subcommittee around looking at the the school locations where there, where we will have magnets continue so so we can um get more efficiencies out of where we place magnets and where we're busing kids to and from. Also, we're also looking at, I know Dr. Perez will probably want to speak to this, but but around reducing the need for capping, which causes an increase in transportation. So, Dr. Perez?
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Yes, um, Dr. Hill, that's a great question. And um as we've looked at data over the years, it's been the question that's been in our minds and how can we be more efficient? Um so that is what the um enrollment management team is looking at currently pulling data around busing and how it impacts attendance and how all of the programs that we have. Um, are we duplicating programs? Does the school right down the street have the same same program? And we're at, and students are asking to go to another school um that has the same programs that their school essentially has. So we're we're looking at all of those things. That team has a very heavy lift. Um but we we will be engaging stakeholders so they can start to see um what the reality is and we can make some better decisions to streamline and improve efficiencies. Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thanks to both of you. My question number two, I know we get uh R D A funds, but with the city of San Bernardino having its own financial woes and on the uh possibility of more woes, um are those funds counted towards what what we have? And how much, how do we usually get from R D A funds annually?
So, Dr. Hill, it's a great question. If uh you'll recall, we use those funds, a portion of them, a good portion of them, to leverage and we borrowed money to build, to add to about seventy, almost eighty million to our building project. And so most of the funds go to make the C O P payment, so the debt payment. There might be a little leftover, which we use for some of our smaller projects. Um and I think I shouldn't, I shouldn't do this, but I think it's about eighteen, I'm going to get back to you, fifteen to sixteen million a year, but I'll get back to you. Most of it's obligated. But we'll tell you what's left. We'll we'll give you what's, we'll tell you what's left, which we hope can help us in other ways.
All right, good. Thank you. And my question three or four. Of the vendors uh that we contract with, have they been approved for the twenty-twenty-one school year? Um, or is that something down the road possibly as we kick this can? We have to take a look at the vendors and see who we can approve and who we can't and who's being effective and how it im- impacts our students?
So thank you, Dr. Hill. Great question. Uh it sits under the L cap work that we've been engaged in with the whole team for the last month. As uh as Ms. Christakos shared, are because our base um went down, it also impacts uh the supplemental concentration, which is commonly called the L cap. Uh we had a supplemental concentration in totaling one hundred thirty in the past years. We had to reduce that to one hundred twenty-eight to be in line with the projected uh S and C going forward, given the impact of COVID. So to answer your question, we we are, we have evaluated with all of our directors across all of our divisions, um the programs and services that they were providing. We have um, we have adjusted those those allocations uh to be in line with the uh al- almost eleven million dollar cut. And we are moving some uh contractors forward that we see as either mission critical or adding a capacity that we lack in our district or or um or or having highly effective programs that we want to see continued. I also want to remind the board and the public that the school supplemental concentration dollars um as right now cannot be used to leverage toward staff salaries and so on and so forth. S and C are 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 designated to provide services above and beyond the base program. And so some might ask how we might consider contracts in an environment where we're cutting so much. But the the reason that we we receive so much supplemental concentration is because of our unduplicated accounts and the needs of our students um as compared to other students in the state. And so we get.
Thank you.
Went off on. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah.
So 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 um I will be prepared, uh Dr. Hill, to share uh with the board and the community um our thoughts in terms of what programs and services uh our staff and 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 principals and teachers and others uh deem uh as mission critical or adding capacities that we're not able to provide for ourselves um or continuing programs that we are piloting. And so we'd be happy to share that. And so the approach, uh Dr. Hill, uh that we'll take on the June tenth L cap meeting is not, is not to do a line-by-line analysis from our community, but to more get more information from our community on what's important to them in terms of programs and services. And we'll take that feedback and input um and go to work to provide a budget that meets the needs of of our of our of our schools and our community. So I'm happy. So the short answer is, yes, some contracts will continue and and some, unfortunately, we just don't have the dollars to continue. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm just hoping the information from the community, not only that they want programs, but why they feel very effective.
Absolutely. We we we're developing a model in the meeting to gather just that information. And and also to Dr. Hill, uh one of the things that we want to preface is that we want the community to inform us what types of programs and services um that they that they think uh we we that we that they believe we need. And so that we don't necessarily get into advocacy around particular vendors and contractors. Because I, you know, so we don't want to get into that kind of a discussion. Uh we really want the community to inform our practices in terms of, these are the supports that we need. Like, we believe we need more safety on campus, student, more staff to attend to, student wellness and well-being. Um PB I S or 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 after-school tutoring or the arts or Vapa and those kinds of broad categories. And then we will go, staff will go to work to make sure that the the L cap budget has the communities as well as the board's fingerprint on it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And my final question, as we look at recommendations for cuts or uh deficits, cutting depth, our deficit, are we getting input from certificate and a classified bargaining unit? Um, not not on what not to do, but their recommendations of where we should cut?
We.
I'll take, I'll take that one. Ken, this problem is on. Tom, are you on? And I don't know if you want to fill that one. From the very start, Dr. Hill, we have had very open dialogue with all of our unions. Um when when we first got the feel for the um May revise and what it was going to do to our budget, we sat down and had information meetings with all of our unions just to share information um and to get a reaction and and um uh just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Because sometimes one of the things that gets in the way of us being able to move forward is, well, we have, we're getting. Because sometimes one of the things that gets in the way of us being able to move forward is, well, we have, we're getting different information than you are. So we want to make sure that the first step is, we're all kind of singing from the same songbook. Uh we met specifically with um with all four unions initially. We had a subsequent meeting with our SBTA co-op. Strictly primarily around the budget. And now we have some additional information. We will, we we will uh move into a different iteration or another iteration of that same process. So that we're all, again, talking the same language, understanding the same numbers and seeing what it means to move forward. In the meantime, all of our groups are um invited to our LCAP meetings. And so we're getting input from that direction as well. Meet with them specifically and then we'll meet with them generally, uh if they choose to be involved. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it does. I just want to make sure, and I know you're meeting with them. I just want to make sure that I also feel we need to cut. So thank you. Great presentation. It's not an easy job you have to do, but we'll get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Um Mr. Gallo?
Uh yes, um I wonder if you could uh put up a chart um uh on the schedule?
The meeting schedule?
Yeah, the meeting schedule. You guys, I just wanted to uh make sure we reiterate, uh you know. The next meetings, next opportunities for public participation. Uh let me see if I can recall. I don't see it on the screen. But uh June ninth, June ninth, we're having another uh board meeting, I guess, the LCAP on June second, right? And uh we've got a June ninth uh board meeting in in there someplace?
No, there is no board meeting scheduled, currently scheduled for June ninth.
Okay.
Have is, if you see on June tenth, our regularly scheduled LCAP.
Yeah.
Budget meeting. Based on the board's comments at the last board meeting, you said we want to be involved in the leadership.
Yep, that's great.
Scheduled that as a board meeting, just so you wouldn't be limited to, we obviously have the budget subcommittee that'll play a role or can play a role. But you could all attend as long as we schedule it as a board meeting.
Yeah, that's why I was bringing it up, because somebody I heard earlier in our conversation brought up June ninth as a board meeting. And I just wanted to make sure. No, it's okay. It it would normally be on a on a Tuesday and um this happens to be a Wednesday, June tenth, so um. Um, yep, that uh that fits. And um I'm sure all of our, as as Margaret brought up, uh our bargaining units, et cetera, will be participating. In these uh these discussions as well.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallo. Okay, Dr. Flores?
Uh yes, I, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to. Thank uh Dr. Volkmer and Ms. Bardier. I'm getting lots of uh messages thanking us uh for making the PowerPoints available to the public. And also for putting the the button to go on, you know, to for our meetings upfront uh on our website. So I just wanna, I would just want to tell you, thank you very much. I I think that that provides transparency and accessibility. Uh to our uh public and our parents and, you know, we want to hear their voices. We want to be transparent. And we want their ideas as well. So uh thank you very much, Madam President. Uh Dr. Volkmer?
All right, and Mr. Tillman, I believe, has a comment?
Yes, uh so when are we gonna agendaize uh and talk about the upcoming school year in terms of? I'm sure it's gonna be a hybrid of some sort, right? Where we're gonna allow for some distant learning and then regular learning. I know we all got the email from the parent who had a child who had asthma and had a real concern. I think that there's gonna be a lot of parents concerned about uh their child coming back to a physical environment with other people. So when are we gonna have the discussion about what school is gonna look like in the next school year? Or are you all already preparing for this upcoming school year in terms of? Um are we thinking about being able to offer distant learning and um a physical site learning?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Tillman. Um the answer is, we're preparing for basically anything and everything. We don't know what the guidance will be. We don't know if the virus will take a turn for the worse. And so we're preparing really for any and all options. Uh Dr. Menares is leading a very extensive work group around uh possibilities. We were actually on uh a Zoom call with China, uh a representative from China. On how they reopened the first school that went back um in China. So we're we're doing extensive research and we'll be prepared to share where we're at so far on June sixteenth. We already have um uh solidified that. Dr. Menares' team uh will be ready to go and talk to you about possibilities, options, et cetera. Uh Rachel, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but Ju- June sixteenth is our target date.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Volkmer. And so, Mr. Tillman, in addition to that, we are um working on get, developing. We've got the survey. We're gonna do a random calling to our families to get a sense of where our families are in terms of. Percentage of who would want to even return their children to school, um who would want to hybrid, who would want to continue with distance learning. That just gives us some additional data. And then we will be taking, um we'll be gathering input from our community. We're going to offer a live streaming um input session on June ninth, one in the morning and one in the evening. To again, hear from our students, our families around what we have gathered thus far and get their thoughts on it. And then we will be sharing all of that with the board on June sixteenth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think that was the last board comment. Or are there any other comments? I don't think I, I don't see anything.
Well, um just just one more. I I asked about this schedule. Uh just to make sure that we're uh in sync on all of the meetings. Now I do hear there's two meetings on June ninth. Um that we expect parents to participate in. Um so do we have that annotated someplace and um?
I'm.
Not a formal board meeting, that's 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 a parent input meeting. I was going to actually ask Dr. Volkmer to announce it next official board meeting on June second. And then we'll have things up on the website, but um the question was asked. So so June ninth is a parent input meeting and of course, um we would always invite our board to be a part of that. We'll do a formal announcement. Uh we'll we'll announce again on June second.
So uh was that June second? Is that when we're gonna have a board meeting? Is that?
Regular schedule.
Next Tuesday, yes.
Right, coming. Okay, did I get everyone? I think I did. So I just, again, um without reiterating the wonderful comments from all of our board members, I think this was a great meeting. I want to thank the team and all the hard work that went into it. And just knowing that you all are moving things in the speed of lightning, you know, and in a in a world of changing, constantly changing things. But we do so much appreciate the work and the collaboration is coming together. So that we can discuss and look at things and identify things and most importantly, um be transparent um to our community. And everyone that that is involved in this process, we want to hear their voices. So we're grateful for the meetings that are set. This board made a commitment. There was a time when we had stopped so many meetings, but now we're upon us to make decisions. And we're gonna have to meet in order to do that, even in a strange virtual world, is just that important. But know that we are talking to our legislators on the regular. I know that Dr. Volkmer is is carving out letters and making calls. And, you know, text messages are also coming in to contact your legislator for those that sit on our California School Board Association. So we are all pushing and pushing and and pushing so that we know that the things may look dreary right now. But our goal is definitely to see it through, that we won't have to go towards the things that no one wants to talk about. But I applaud the team and I applaud the district and all of us for being ahead. Rather than waiting until the last minute, the great thing about this team and us working together. Is we like to foreshadow things and not wait until it's over. And that that takes a lot of effort to say, we're gonna look at it no matter what. And if things work out better, we're grateful and we're happy about that. So thank you to everyone, um everyone's input. Look forward, please, um parents and viewers and everyone. Please look forward to those workshops because we want to hear from you. We want to see and hear your input. And that is going to help us as we move towards whatever it's going to look like in the in the next school year. But we're closing out this school year, knowing that there's a lot of work ahead. But, you know, we're all up for the task and I appreciate everyone. And having said that, I think we'll see each other uh June the second, I think is the next regular scheduled board meeting. So thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, are there, are there any public comments? Um I know.
I was not alerted that there were any Karen. Is there some now? Because we're not going into closed session. I didn't get a. Sorry, I couldn't get my mic. I know, we have no com- no comments. Okay, that's what you had told me earlier. Okay, so everyone have a great night, um stay safe. Stay, you know, just make sure that you're doing everything to keep yourself safe and others. It is still Mental Health Awareness Month, so please take care of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Madam President. Madam President, I move to adjourn.
One second.
All right, and.
Question before we go, are we going into closed session?
No, we're not. This is gonna be it. Okay, so um let's do a roll call. Uh Dr. Flores? Uh, uh, yes. Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Wyatt? Dr. Wyatt, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Rosales Medina. And Gwen Rogers, I. So I do believe we.
Well, and I'm still here, but thanks for asking, thanks for asking, Gwen Rogers.
I can't see anybody else. Okay, Mr. Gallo?
Yeah, we we don't really, you don't really need to.
All right, we're good.
Take an official vote.
Exactly, but you know, we're 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 happy to be here. All right, everyone have a great night. Motion carried. We are now adjourned.
Okay, good night.